But what's the, we gotta close.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what it all comes down to.
Uh-huh.
We gotta close. So what sort of expectation? And you can't tell us, we don't know.
Mm-hmm.
But should there be some sort of expectation about closure on 58 projects that we should be looking at? And I'm gonna go ahead and ask my second question because it might work in it. One of the things that surprised me was the small Department of Defense portion. Because we've always sort of felt like, you know, the military contracting side was a big part of our industry.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is there a new normal of with sequestration and government not funding as many contractors? Or are some of these government contractors maybe too small to have actually approached you? Or they wrapped up into manufacturing or business and financial? So that was a lot of information. Do your best with what you got.
I'll try to remember and get it over.
Okay.
No. Number one, to answer your question, I think it's a combination of reasons as to why the DOD percentage is smaller. You hit on one factor. Sometimes these companies, they come without us even knowing. They'll rent some space, you know, it's a small square footage without contacting anyone. They don't need incentives. They don't need help with locating something. They, real estate, they know where they want to be and they do it themselves.
Right.
So I think that's one reason. Second, I don't think that their, the sequestration really has affected some of the contractors. I think the cycle of contracting with the military affects kind of when they locate and where they locate and how that works. But I also think that really the companies here may, that's already in existence, may be capturing most of those contracts here. So really isn't a need for new companies to come there, maybe not contracting with new companies. So I really, I don't have a specific answer as to why that number is smaller, but I think it's a combination of those things. And I think that we're working hard, that is one of our industry sectors because that's a strength of ours. So we're continuously focused on that. But I, I'm not really sure as to why that number has decreased as significant. I will tell you, one of the DOD projects that we are working, that actually did a visit a few months ago. No, that's in the DOD percentage. So no, that would be in there. It wouldn't fall into manufacturing, distribution. We specifically put it in DOD if we're aware that it's defense-related. And then secondly, to your first question, if we have a closure goal. Yes, our closure goal is to close all of them, if we could. But we, sometimes that's not possible. There's a lot of moving factors to affect if we close a project or not. But really, from my understanding, and Tim, you may chime in on this. Our goals are, is to increase the pipeline. And that means that the number of projects that we are getting, because that hopefully will result in a larger closure rate. I don't believe we actually have, we have to close three projects because there's no way we can control if those projects close or not. I wish we could. We have, we just don't have that sort of control over projects. And, and looking across the board at communities that have economic development programs, they don't have closure rates. It's just, it's so hard to capture and to put a number to the number of closures. What usually economic development organizations are measured on is the number of projects and the number of visits that they, that they get. And that's kind of, am I answering that?
No, perfect answer. And thank you for the question, Commissioner. The, and this is gonna take us back in history, and Chairman Edge has heard me say this in our meetings before. In previous years, and if we think back prior to the Alliance, we were very reactive in the economic development effort. In that consultant had to come to us, or the state would originate in a lead. And so the projects that we had going on generally were in the 10 to 20 range. That's historically where this county was as far as economic development activity. The work that Juana has done over the last year and Russ prior to that was reaching out to this consultants. How many trips have you been on this past fiscal year?
Fiscal year, the number of consultants I've met with directly is over 100. And those are face-to-face visits. That does not count the number of people I've spoken to on the phone. Emails are connected with in other capacities, but direct visits.
Tremendous outreach effort to put us on the map with consultants who many times did not know of Fayetteville and Cumberland County, or had not registered with them to bring any project to even consider. So the percentage that we would look at, I don't think we can identify it. I wish we could, because I'm in a business and you are too, that we identify our targets, set them out, and how do we reach them? In the economic development arena, our job is to go out, recognize the opportunities that we need to bring in the door. The community has to sell itself when it's coming in. Now, there's significant work going on, and you'll see some other things when it talks about the workforce study that's gonna help us in that regard. But compared to the last three years and prior to that, the major change in economic development for us has been the outreach effort and making contact. Two of those major cases that have visits right now were through those outreach efforts that possibly would not. And I know one for sure would not have come here without the effort. And possibly the other that was strictly because of what Russ and Juana have done, reaching out. And those are two, I think, the biggest positive that we've had, that we've now got 58 projects and previously had none of that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adams, I believe you were next.
I think Commissioner Evans, I saw him reach down and push his button.
Sorry, I didn't get that.
That's okay.
Commissioner Evans, go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
I saw him push his button.
And thank you for the presentation. I think that this one probably be for Mr. Richardson, Tim Richardson.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Let me try. What is it?
Okay. I like that. I like that. Let you try. Okay. And, and the only reason I said that was because you've only been here a year with, regardless, this is dealing with past
Okay.
actions of the Alliance and economic development and things of that nature. But you could try. We, first of all, for our viewing audience, and for those of us that may not understand what a project is, could you explain that, please?
So a project is, I got this one. A project is when we have information on capital investment, we have information on job numbers. We, we have some pieces of the puzzle that we feel comfortable with and providing feedback for. So we, again, we know capital investment, we know jobs, we know either the company or the consulting, or the consulting firm representing the company, or it's come from either the state or from the southeast region. So those factors. And then we have a little bit of a timeline, you know, they may say, you know, the next year, the next 18 months. So really, those are the factors that are considered a project.
Okay, so in other words, what you're, and I hope I'm explaining it right. The current project count of 58 is 58 possible?
Possible. Yes.
Opportunities for employers to come to Fayetteville or employees to come to Fayetteville. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Richardson. We have had a hard time as far as getting, we've had people to come in and look at Fayetteville and Cumberland County for the possibility of bringing jobs here. And I know that it encompasses a number of things other than just them coming here and setting up count for employment. Everything is involved. Recreation, schools, and all of that stuff. As far as your organization is concerned, what are you doing differently? And I think this is in line to what Commissioner Keith, what he was saying as far as the closing. What are we doing differently, when I say we are speaking of the Alliance, to close it, to guarantee that is a very, not just a good possibility, but it's an excellent possibility that that firm will be coming here. What are we doing differently than what we have done in the past?
Well, and I'll go back to, and I'll ask Juana to add in as well. But I go back to different, from what was done in the past, is creating more opportunities. There's an old saying in the insurance business, and some of y'all know that insurance business pretty well, that you have to make 10 calls to get three people interested to make the one sale. Economic development's no different. When we talk about 58 projects, and Juana mentioned what it takes to be called a project, those are people that have, we have directly engaged, that have said, we want an RFP completed to where we want to know the labor force, we want to know site availability, utilities. Information that those companies want to say is Fayetteville, Cumberland County, a viable site for us to consider. It's just like the one, this, the distribution warehouse that started out, it's a $75 million project. Started out with only 30 communities that were being reviewed, and we ended up being one of three. That's a very important project. But doing differently to bring closure, I do think the Garner Economic Study was a big part of what says what we have to do as a community to do different. And of course, that originated in the economic development arena, which created the Alliance. So when you look at the, what we call the green, the yellow, and the red within the Garner Economic Study, many of those areas have been addressed or continue to be addressed. And that, those are many facets within our community beyond economic development. When we think about the school system, Sheriff's Department, county government, city government. Those are very important parts that are in fact, do different to bring a higher closure rate. Because what the Garner Economic Study was saying, when a site consultant or company comes in, how do you measure to the other communities that are being looked at? And our role and the community's role, commissioners, city council, sheriff's, school system, it is all to elevate how we're viewed when they come in. The workforce study is gonna be one of the very important things that will, we think will increase our hit rate as far as people saying, we are a good community to look at. Because labor force is one of the biggest things that industry is going to look at. What is that labor force? And we've, and I'll go ahead and step into the next part, just briefly. As a community, we've never been able to gauge what's coming off of Fort Bragg. What are the skill sets and how they match up with the labor force requirements of industry? And one of the key components that Russ has worked on with General Retired Rodney Anderson is, is starting to develop information coming straight out of Fort Bragg of exiting soldiers. And that data is now starting to flow, and we're getting that in. And in fact, September is really the first month that we'll have full data then in coordination with Fayetteville State, Fayetteville Tech, other partners that we're working with. And Juana, why don't you fill in the gap?
Sure. So I think that's a, I really can't attest to what's been done in the past, but I know since I have been here, some of the things that we have done to really try to secure trying to land a project, really. We go the extra mile, making sure our RFPs are completely filled out. When, when someone is looking at a RFP and they see questions, or we don't have an answer to something, questions leaves questions. And so that, that's not good. So if we're able to completely answer all of the questions that are in a RFP, we may have to call utilities, we may have to call engineering, may have to call the county, may have to call the city. There's a number of things that goes into putting a package together to make sure it's complete. And I think since I have been here, we have gone an extra mile to make sure we are fully completing RFPs to the best of our ability. Even going the extra mile of contacting GIS, making sure we do additional maps that may help someone be able to ascertain where a property could fit, or the utilities, where they come into the site. So I, I think that's number one. Just really making sure we're doing a bang-up job with providing a completed RFP. Follow-up, follow-up is important. So I, with Russ's timing and with everything else, with him doing other things, he may not have had the time to completely, to thoroughly follow up with companies, with consultants, with, with the state to see where we're at on projects. I know I'm consistently reaching out to the state. Every month, I'm sending them email, hey, this is our land sites, this is our buildings, keep us in mind. Because I don't think Raleigh has a good feel for our community, for whatever reason. And so I think the consistent effort to try to stay in front of them is something that we're continuously trying to do in order to be on their radar. In addition to consistently getting out e-blast, consistently meeting with people face-to-face. We all know relationships go the extra, when you have a relationship, that can make a difference with, with a consultant, with a company. So I think consistently doing that, that that would help us to try to ensure that we're increasing the pipeline and ultimately landing jobs. And, and To what? Russ said, or, not Russ, I miss Russ. To Tim said about the existing military workforce survey. That's something that we, we did some due diligence. We kind of looked at some other military communities. Actually, some, a consultant that I had visited, I was like, you know, how are some military communities sharing with, with you guys their workforce, their information? We did a little bit of digging. Actually, Fort Hood is doing something very similar to what we, what we implemented. They did a survey out to their exiting military workforce to kind of see what their salary expectations was, if they would be interested in staying in the community, if there was a job. There's a number of things that are on that questionnaire that would be able to help us be, be able to share with companies and consultants the workforce that potentially coming out of Fort Bragg that could be a benefit for their company. They, they want to know how many people would fit in this, not necessarily MOS, but maybe the, the industry sector in which they would need the type of employee. So that's gonna help them better understand, hey, Fayetteville has, you know, 500 people coming off every quarter, every year that has a, a, a understanding of this. And so we may need to look at them a little bit more. So I think this information is gonna be helpful for us to be able to share about our workforce. All those things work together. So I, I think there's a number of things that we're doing to, to really increase the ability for us to land projects.
And one more question, and Mr. Chair, I'll be through. You referred to reaching out.
Mm-hmm.
Is this something that's, that's being done by the Alliance, or has this been an ongoing process?
I think it's been an ongoing process, but maybe, maybe not consistently. For example, I know when I started, I was out meeting with, with companies and consultants. And Russ, his time is just, he would need two or three of him to do what he does, and then what I do, and kind of the other things that he does. I think it was being done. I just don't think time allowed him to do it consistently.
And I agree. But Russ had excellent contacts in the field. It's just like our new chair or CEO of the Partnership for North Carolina, Chris Chung. Russ actually previously worked with Chris, and, and in fact, Chris was underneath Russ. And they've got a wonderful personal relationship as well as a great professional relationship. Russ brought those to the table for us in Cumberland County. Previously, we didn't have those kind of ties to many of these consultants that were being worked as well as the economic development effort. So our, so to speak, reputation grew with Russ's ability. Did he have time to make a trip to Canada to visit consultants and industry in Canada, as Juana has done? No. Because he was having to work those RFPs for the active projects as they came in. Juana was brought on board to do the active participation. And I'll go back to prior to Russ joining, that prior to Russ joining and the Alliance being stood up or that framework, we were just taking what came through the door. It, if, very reactive, if it was an outreach effort, it was strictly via email or what I would call mass flyer, just a, almost an ad that said, this is Cumberland County in economic development magazines and other period articles. So the targeted and specific contacts to individuals was not done prior. That was just not part of the mix.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, and I'd just like to add one thing to that, if I may, that, and I don't mean to embarrass her or put her on the spot or anything, but I think the addition in the last year of Juana is a reflection of why we have so many projects now as compared to other years. Because she has made those contacts, and that's made a difference, I think, in, in the Alliance. So, Mr. Adams.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and I've got two questions, but I got a comment. It's fine to have projects, but you can't follow up. It really doesn't matter. I mean, that's, in my business, if 20 people can call me, if I can't call them back and I can't follow up. So, you know, I'm impressed by the number, but when you tell me I don't have enough time to get to them, to get back to them, that's an issue. And I don't think that you're gonna be able to close if that's a problem. But that's not my question. My question, I guess, is this, is that last week, or last month, I read the Forbes article, which is, it just puts us at the very bottom, our community. And you said something that a company came in, one of the three, that talked about our strengths and weaknesses. Two questions. One, can you elaborate on what those strengths and weaknesses are of this community? And second, once they identify to you, who do you in the community go to to let them know that that's a weakness or a strength?
Okay.
So if it's education, do you talk to the school system? If it's us, do you talk to us? So that would be
Okay.
The question.
Thank you. I want to comment on the first one. I think a little bit of the past maybe was a timing issue, but I don't think we have the time issue now. My sole job is to do the marketing and business development and be able to follow up on projects and when they visit. I mean, after every visit we've had, and even after inquiries, I'm consistently follow up. Hey, do you need anything else? Do you have any other questions? That, I don't think that that's an issue currently. So I, I
I just heard it. I mean, that was, that was, that was kind of what I got from, from, because I think you said, need four or five of Russ's, because he can't follow up on that. I'm just getting the information, what I'm listening to, and what you're saying just don't, they don't go together with me.
I apologize. It was miscommunication. I think we were talking about the past, and that, that's why he needed to hire someone in order to, to help to fill that void. So I, I think we're doing that, and I think we're doing that well. Then your second question, yes, we did have consultants in, and they have provided some feedback and positive, from a positive standpoint, and from a standpoint in which we can improve upon. I know that they, one particular consulting firm provided kind of like a scorecard, and I think Russ has sat down with a few people to kind of talk about that. But really, some of our, our strengths that we know of is our downtown, our downtown is a positive. I think the fact that we have the military, and we have some exiting work, military, and we have some workforce that we haven't been able to formally tap, previously tap into, which is one of the reasons why we thought it was very important to get this workforce study. So, but, but having a military here and having that exiting military is a positive. I think our location is a positive, being right off 95, that definitely, that's a positive. Having a regional airport is a positive. Being an hour away from Raleigh's International Airport is a positive. Having a ED team in place that can help gap the questions to what the company is looking for is a positive. Some of the challenges I think we need to work on, or I guess another one of the positives is our, that we have a community college. Third in the, in the state, third largest in the state, that's a positive. Then we have FSU, and we have Methodist. Those are, those are all positives.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying what the company say. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, no. That's what they, mm-hmm. Yes, that's their feedback. And then some of the negatives, or some of the opportunities in which we can improve upon, is some real estate. We're, we're hurting for office real estate. And for call centers, for back office, we really only have one option, and that's the AIT building downtown. That's, that's an issue. And then from an industrial standpoint, we have the 250, we're, we're lacking a little bit when it comes to buildings. And, and then when it comes to real estate to land, yes, we have CIC and we have CCBC. And one of the things that came out of one of the visits with CCBC is that we didn't have utilities in place already. So that's something that Russ has been working with, with South River to kind of get utilities out there, because that is a negative. There's other, there's other communities that have industrial land that already have their utilities in there, and we, we didn't, we didn't. So that definitely was a negative. Let's see what else was said, and I would have to recall. I, I know Russ went my sharing day.
And I mean, if you could just give it to me later, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah. So there, there was positives and negatives. Did I answer both questions?
You did.
Okay.
Thank you.
One of the, if I may point out two other negatives that have been talked about. One is as people come in to visit, and this includes the entire community. This community effort is the amount of trash that's on the roads and the litter and so forth. Some communities don't have that, but for some reason, we have it in Cumberland County. That's a, a community problem. That's not something that the commissioners or the sheriff's department or any particular organization can improve upon. The other native that sometimes is related to our community, and this is no reflection on the law enforcement people, they do a great job and should be respected for what they do, but is the amount of crime in the community. And part of that comes from lack of jobs, lack of good jobs. People that, and we talked about this at our last meeting, the people that employers come in and attempt to hire, and they can't hire because they can't pass the drug test. That's a negative. That's, those are things that are community problems, and it's not just our community. If you've listened to the news for the last couple of days, and, you know, and compare other cities or cities our size, look at what's happened in Durham the last few days. Look what happened all over the country. And we don't want those kinds of things to happen in any community. But we've got to face the facts. If that's happening, it's a lot different if there is a community that is better and safer than our community. So, so those are all things that, again, that are being talked about. And again, I don't mean to get on my soapbox, but I attend the meetings, so that's why I'm saying that.
And I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, and I think it's important for all of us. I don't know if everybody's read the Forbes article that came out. It talks about education, it talks about this community, it talks about crime, and it talks about quality of life. And I mean, if you haven't read it, I think it's important for us, each one of us, to read it because it really, I think we're like 1/47th out of, out of the nation. I mean, they put us pretty bad. And I think it's incumbent upon us, and that's why I asked whether we disseminate this information, because if we don't, those partners that we have don't know to get any better. Everybody, because sometimes we're in silos, and we believe we're doing a good job, and we're not doing as good as we think we are. And so I think it's important, and I know we've had this conversation, the county manager's read that article, and I think she's trying to put something together for all of us, so I give her kudos for that. Thank you, madam.
And there's a lot of positive going on, Scotty.
Yeah, there are a lot of positives.
And so with that, I'm gonna call Commissioner Council, she's next, and we'll go back to Mr. Evans.
I thought you had forgotten about me.
No, man, I haven't.
I talked too much, that's all.
Juana, no, it wasn't you.
It was me.
No.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
I apologize.
It wasn't you. Now you're all hushed. Juana, I was here when you came, and I remember very well what Russ was involved in last year at this time. And I remember, and I'm, I remember the focus that you said that you would have. And I am impressed with the gains that you have made, the reaching out, being proactive. And I, I just can't help but think what we could do if you had someone, another you, or follow-up, because it takes more than one. It takes a team. And I think both you and Russ have been, I remember where we were last year, okay? And the beginning of this year, and that was just with one project. And for you to generate all of the activities on a very, it was a very negative atmosphere in this community, which you could not control. And to generate, to go out and reach out, and to do what you've been able to do, you and the rest of the team, I think is admirable.
Thank you.
It is very, very easy for us to ask you, where are the results? And what have you, what have you actually, actually brought here? And I've been a part of that, even in the meetings last year. Okay, okay, stop telling me about the birth patty, show me the baby. Because that's what we as electeds want. But there's another part of this, because this is a team effort. I personally think that we are going in the right direction, and I feel very positive.
I do.
And all airplanes, and all buses, and all trains are gonna stop you and Russ from leaving because we've got a good beginning. Tim, congratulations on your leadership. But it takes all of us, and at some point, and now is not the time, but at some point, we need to have a, a down and dirty conversation with what all of us can do to help. we need to have a, a down and dirty conversation with what all of us can do to help. But to, to improve on the positives takes more than two people doing it. It takes all of us doing it and we need.